Five oh six on February. Wednesday, the third. I'm going to call the meeting ordered. Take a quick roll call. We'll get to it. Bob Sheen. Here. Gillian.
Here.
Rob Shelvin.
Here.
Jason Swiegel.
Here.
Jim Trompke. Here. Ken.
Yes, good evening, Board. So this afternoon, I sent you documents that should be familiar to you, as I think we were working off them, at least initially in the summer. And they were specific to the map amendment and the outdoor venue item. And I don't know if, you know, seeing that again, re, you know, jogged your memory as to how we were discussing that. But I think based on the last meeting, understanding that some warrant articles for map amendments, you know, the, the expansion of the industrial district is the one that, you know, we can at least continue to speak, talk to and understand that that's probably something that the, the Board will be looking to do for this upcoming town, spring town meeting. And then reexamine those two corridors for the other map amendments. Now with regards to the further, the, the Westover item, I did reach out and finally got in touch with the planner over at the Westover base and they are going to be presenting their update to their AIU, AICUZ, which, as you recall, is the is the, the zone where the air installation compatible use zone. And so they're inviting, obviously, the communities that are going to be impacted and, and have those in the plan in their joint land use study, of which Granby is, is a community. So I will, as I just got the invitation today, send that over to the Board and they're having something, I believe, on February eighteenth, which could be helpful to, to at least understand the different types of land uses that would could be compatible with those, that particular area that's in that zone. You know, as I mentioned at the last meeting, too, the Board may want to explore something similar to what the town of Ludlow did with regards to an overlay for those parcels. And that is specific to creating prohibitions on the different types of uses for any, any, any of the parcels that fall in that overlay. And so, you know, presume, so there could be an opportunity for the Board to examine both prohibited uses, but at the same time, identify uses that may be appropriate for that. You know, but the, the Board was also looking at mixed use opportunities, assuming that they could be compatible with AICUZ as well as, you know, the other opportunities. So in, since the last meeting, it really has been a present, a presentation of to you, to the Board of what was part of that meeting in the summer. And I don't know if there were any additional comments. I know that more than likely, if, if there's some further exploration of how that warrant language is to be written, we're going to want to make sure that we're choosing the right parcels or have the right parcels listed that would be undergoing those zoning changes. But that's just a comment about the maps. I don't know if there was any further questions or thoughts about the map amendments based on our last meeting and, you know, being, getting familiar again with the initial, the initial discussion we had in the summer. I foresee that, you know, as, as we get, as we get further into the process and identifying a public hearing date and possible language, there's going to be a, a an opportunity. And before we had some technical difficulties this, this evening getting on, I suggested that maybe coming out to to Granby to, you know, do a presentation with the Boards that were, the Board members that could choose to be in the room and also utilize screen share more aptly for both the public and for the Board members who can participate via computer. I don't know who's participating via computer at the moment. And I don't know if it, it may be worthwhile to, to go over those map documents, but if, if you're participating by phone, it may be a little more difficult. So I don't know if there's any comments with regards to the maps. The map's always, I think, going to be a little harder to kind of navigate over this virtual setting.
Okay, so so until Westover has their presentation
Okay.
on the allowed use groups in their on, on that, on the area that, that concerns Granby, why don't we put that, that on hold?
Okay.
So we have no sense going too far with that until we, we know what they're, they're property. So so let's not worry, worry about, we, we should probably name that area that we're discussing, that we should probably have some sort of a description for it versus the other, the other phase.
Yeah, we have, I think, in the, in the document that I shared with you this afternoon, we at least described the stretches of road. Now, I think, you know, we're, we're still figuring out the the, I think the, the Board had suggested three hundred feet on either side of the right of way as that, you know, boundary. But, you know, we can fine tune if there are certain parcels that would be receiving this treatment. But I think as, as the Chair mentioned, you know, after, or at least that, that stretch, which if you look, look at the document, was specific to East Street. Where is it? East Street between New Ludlow Road and the Ludlow Town Line. You know, if it was just that area or if it was the entire corridor. I think it'll be good to, to navigate that discussion after the presentation by the Air Force, the Air Reserve Base. But with regards to the other corridors and the other sites, I don't know if there is any additional comment with regards to that. If there's some more information that you think that the Board needs, we'll definitely, as we've done in the past, for other bylaw amendments, obviously, prepare a planning board report and, and do that, you know, process and, and provide the, the materials for review for the community. But I think, you know, just, just getting that confirmation about the exact parcels and how, how the Board wants to navigate identifying those parcels will be the important thing.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um. Is that Westover area just that one side of the road or is it both sides?
Let me quickly pull up that AICUZ map.
Westover has purchased both sides in some cases.
So there's some houses or whatever in there that aren't included in all this?
Correct. They've chosen not to be purchased. But they still follow that zone.
So whatever you do with that zone, it'll apply to them, too.
Say that again, Will.
Whatever we do to that particular area, say, New Ludlow Road, where New Ludlow Road meets East Street to the Ludlow Town Line, it'll apply on both sides.
Yes, correct.
And Ken, did you say you sent something earlier today?
Um, yeah, it was, it was those documents that you've seen before. I sent it at noon.
Okay, because I didn't get anything.
Okay. I think we had this issue before, Lil, with regards to, to missing emails. I'll just make sure that, it, again, Lil, it's, it's the document that had the three different maps, the parcelized maps with proposed warrant language and then a document that you've shared in the past, which was the agricultural use of small scale entertainment, outdoor venue bylaw language from the three communities that we were looking at. So it's not any new documents, but maybe if you're able, I can try to forward this again to you.
Well, I have some documents from July.
That, yeah, it's, it's those documents. There was nothing changed from it. I just sent it to you under another. Yeah, I'm not another address, but another way.
You just sent it?
I don't know. So they're not new documents. I didn't share any new documents with the Board. These are documents that the Board has seen in the past.
Okay, and, and that one you just sent just came in.
Yeah, that was the one I sent this afternoon, yeah.
I see that, but for some reason, it's out in la la land somewhere.
So I don't know if the Board, you know, for those other two corridors, if there was some additional discussion that you wanted to have regarding that or did you want to? Because they were specific to map amendments. I know that the industrial, I haven't done the, the work to identify the uses for the possible expansion of the industrial district of the South Hadley Line on, along New Ludlow Road. But with regards to map, you know, I, I think just understanding which, which parcels we are looking at or what stretch in the, in the instance of the East Street between Pleasant Street and New Ludlow Road.
Okay, so the New Ludlow Road piece where we want to expand the the South Hadley Line property to industrial, to include it into the industrial zone to the Morgans, well, just, just west of Morgan Street, I guess you would say. No, I thought we were going to leave all those homes as residential. We're just going to go from, okay. That, that's what I'm, that's what I'm alluding to, just west of the potential area. So yes, Bob, you're correct. So that, I would say that's a go. We could prep that for, for an article if, if the rest members agree.
So would that be the article that is directly abutting the South Hadley Line and the Chickapee Line, which is like almost a rectangular shape, south of New Ludlow Road?
Yes, yes.
And actually, I'm wondering, I'm also wondering about this, as I'm looking at the map, lot number one fourteen and the other lot that is between one fourteen and the big lot that butts the South Hadley Line, Chickapee Line, there's a, a big rectangle in there. I I mean, there's no, I don't see any sense in in excluding those out. Although then you give frontage on Morgan Street. You know what I mean?
Yeah, you give, I don't know about that particular, that other rectangular lot that's between one fourteen and the large lot. Where is the access?
I would include it all. One twelve, one fourteen.
The smaller rectangular lot and the larger one that butts against South Hadley.
I'd include it all.
So not, not those small rectangular ones that run.
You mean the real small ones next to twenty-two, which would be twenty and, and eighteen, I guess? I would not include those.
Okay. So what I can do for the Board is identify those large parcels and in a, in a map form at the, just a crude map to ensure that those are the parcels that the Board, you know, is, is seeking to support that map change. I think we need to determine one twelve the ability to develop that type of industrial use. The challenge of the, the frontage over there.
Well, the challenge of frontage, again, it's, it's they can pull their frontage off the abutting lot if, if
Yeah.
for some, somebody wanted to do something with it or appeal it for, for access.
Okay.
You know, you know, the more I look in at this, I almost I know you're not, there's some pros and cons to over, but you could almost go for Morgan, the South Hadley Line as an overlay.
Jim, could you repeat that, please?
I said you you could, you could go from Morgan, right, the South Hadley Line is an overlay including the residential lots. So if somebody chose to do something including selling their, their home or a lot to access the property for, for industrial purposes. I think that would be cleaner. Especially seeing all those homes in there have I shouldn't say all of them. That area has a high water table there with issues with septic systems. So if they had an opportunity to sell to somebody that wanted to put something else industrial in there. Why would we pre?
That could certainly be a a thought and we, when we do the public hearing, we could invite those residents to, to comment.
Yes. I, I would propose from Morgan Street to South Hadley Line.
So Jim, just so I'm clear on this, you're saying rezoning from Morgan Street, actually, the New Ludlow Road part, starting at Morgan Street over to the South Hadley Line.
Correct.
You're rezoning it what?
Industrial.
Where all those houses are?
Correct. An overlay.
Industrial.
Pardon me?
An industrial overlay on top of the residential?
Yes.
So somebody could come in buy up a couple of houses. Well, there's no real place for anybody to develop unless it's that land that's for sale just past the houses there. Um. I'm just I'm, I'm, right now, I don't think I need to include the houses. I know it's nice and neat to make it like that, but I don't know if those people are happy there knowing that somebody could come in and, and just plonk some industrial in there.
And if I can go ahead. If I can take Will's thought a little bit further, the people across the street may not appreciate having something industrial in there.
Right.
You know, the residents. And like you said, Jim, and Lil agreed, I, you know, it does make logistics sense to go right from New Ludlow, I'm sorry, from Morgan Street to the South Hadley Line. But I think we got to tread carefully.
So that, that's why I'd like to getting feedback here. Bring it up at the hearing. Because there's, there's so let's say twenty-two and twenty-four decided to sell to industrial. Those two lots wouldn't make up enough property or an industrial, given the setbacks and requirements under those, under those bylaws. But if somebody wanted to come in and buy up the whole corner there and include one twelve and one fourteen, they'd be able to, which would allow those folks to be able to, to sell their homes for industrial. I think it I'm only doing it, and I'm only bringing it up to to help the residents there if they chose to do so rather than exclude them from it and have industrial all around them.
Well, we can certainly wait and see what the public hearing says or, you know, resident input.
I mean, the setbacks are different off the road. It's not like they can put a, a, a fact off the frontage.
If the water table's so high, they would have a problem putting anything industrial in there, wouldn't they?
Well, necessarily, because if there was, if there was something industrial, large enough, they could bring the sewer in. It's right down the, it's, it's not too far from there.
From the South Hadley side?
Correct. I'm just trying to give them another opportunity to do something if they chose to do so.
Then the people that are in the houses there now?
Correct.
Okay.
And if they choose, and if we get feedback at the town meeting, they say, nope, then that, that's okay. We can cut it back to behind, behind their lots or, or, or stop it as the the triangle lot, all the way back. Do that, too. Not include one twelve, one fourteen and that other rectangular lot there, the larger one in the back. We could do that as well.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to find out who the property owners are of the very large lot next to South Hadley in Chickapee. The rectangular one that appears to be, if you will, landlocked. I can't believe that it is, though, that borders Chickapee. Yeah, they, those one fourteen, the rectangular lot and the big one, may all be under common ownership. I don't know.
It could be. And from what I can see in most of this, it's pretty wet anyway. So I don't, I don't, yes. I know, you know, I sit on the, the Committee for, for Economic Development. We've kind of had these discussions. There was some high dry land in the back, but it still doesn't meet some set that it would require would be required for it to build around some of these wetlands. So I, I don't know, but just because we put an overlay doesn't mean, you know, it, it an industrial park is going to come. Let's face it.
Right.
How many of our industrial parks in Western Mass are half empty? You know, we missed our boat back in the late sixties, early seventies to rezone industrial on the Westover.
All right. So I just wanted to, I know that there was a question about ownership. So I'm pulling up the GIS tool, which also includes assessor's data, and that large parcel is owned by Tan Realty. And thus, the weird rectangle one that seems to be landlocked and has no access to any road is owned by Bedrock Financial LLC. But, yeah, if that means anything to the Board.
How about one fourteen, Jim?
One fourteen, let's see. That is owned by David Harris. David Harris and, yeah, David Harris of Huntington.
Well, when we go to for the hearing. Okay.
Could you say what?
Okay, go ahead. I said they'll all get an oath hearing, or if they have any they'll have the opportunity to.
Okay.
Is there any more particular rezone?
Not for myself, not regarding the New Ludlow Road.
So, so now, now is there any additional information on the outdoor venue, Ken, that you into since our meeting?
Before, before we go there, if I may, this meeting on, I think, Ken, you said February eighteenth with loosely stated Westover, is that some, is that a meeting that somebody from PVPC is going to be attending?
Because more than likely, it'll be me, just because, you know, I serve as the, the zoning contact for PVPC. And I know that we've been working on, or we worked on the J, the Joint Land Use Study. I know the planners from the surrounding communities will be hopefully attending. I know the planners from the surrounding communities will be hopefully attending. But I am, I will be there.
So we could loosely stated, use you as our liaison if a board member or if If none of the members were able to attend.
Yeah, I it's, yeah, so it, I just want to confirm that that is, I'm gonna send you the document that I received from From Westover, but yeah, if if that is something that the, if the board can't attend, I'll be there to report. Just because I think it's worthwhile to understand. Just from my knowledge and to assist the board With that particular location that falls in the, you know, in the subject area that they're gonna be discussing.
If you could forward that information on that meeting, that would be good.
Yes.
Any member that In addition to
Now, I I assume that this is gonna be a virtual meeting?
This will be a virtual meeting, yes.
Okay, so the five members of our planning board have to be careful that no, no more than two attend. Or else it's gonna have to be posted as a Planning board meeting, doesn't it?
Um. I I don't know, that's an interesting legal question in that it's a meeting that's hosted by Another government entity, which will probably already be posted. I suppose that if the town wanted to You know, advertise this or or post it to its own For the purposes of, you know, informing the community, they could, I think The the town can do that and suggest in in small letters that there may be a quorum of planning board members that do attend. And I think there's some language that we can suggest that There won't be any action by the planning board at that meeting. It's to be informed.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'm ready to move on to outdoor entertainment.
Hey, floor is yours.
So with the outdoor entertainment, what I shared with you was again, a document that you saw back in In the summer, and I didn't change anything from that. But, you know, as I briefly discussed on Monday, it's specific to Um. It's specific to The the ways that I think you can address these types of uses in your zoning bylaw. And obviously, the example, which is the top, which is the town of Southbridge, which was the the community that I served as the town planner And conservation agent for prior to landing at PVPC. The town adopted, the town council adopted, you know, this bylaw. It is a community that has A relatively dense urban center, but its outskirts are parcels that are similar to Granby. You know, large, you know, very large parcels where these types of uses could possibly be Be used there, and I know that since this was adopted, they've got into compliance some of the parcels that Um. There was some some question about how to operate that type of use with the absence That of that type of use in the previous bylaw, and now they're correctly permitted so that they're able to do that, and that was regarding A a home that through a special permit that would be allowed to be used as Um. As a place where some commercial activity could occur. So that is The the example where, you know, the the board can be proactive in identifying future uses for those large parcels, Which more than likely would include parcels that were used for agricultural Types of activities, and that's suggested by the bylaw that was presented, that section of the bylaw. Where on these large parcels, if if you could see some sort of petting farm on a parcel or a couple of those parcels, some sort of nature trail, Open air area. Those, and again, I think it's also important to note that Section three of chapter forty-eight does provide agricultural exemption to zoning For similar uses, but I think the way that the bylaw is, has been written for the town of Southbridge, Which I I could foresee a permitting process existing in Granby Is very specific to thresholds that would need to be met In order to come before the board for either a site plan approval or a special permit. And that's suggested in, go ahead.
That's under section three.
Of your bylaw?
Yeah, section three what? I don't have it. You just, you just said.
Let me just quickly go to your document.
Jim, I thought Ken was saying it was section three under somebody else's bylaw. Maybe I'm incorrect.
Yes, I was saying that it was With this, the example that I, oh, section three of chapter forty-eight of the MGL. So that was specific to agricultural exemptions where some zoning There would be some instances within the town zoning that wouldn't necessarily be Would not necessarily apply to some agricultural uses on the parcels larger than five acres In town. But I'm looking at your section three. And I don't know, Jim, if there, if if it was something that I said In your schedule of uses, right? And those, those are, so for the most part, just quickly looking at the the land use classification for your schedule of use table Under three point two, which is agricultural. You know, the the types of uses based on this example, and I'm looking at the first example, which is specific to Agriculturally related uses that are permitted in any district, which is similar to the way you've Defined those types of uses under three point two point zero up to, you know, three point two point five four six. Or yeah, to three point two point four. Um, but then if you look at one point, one point three B, which is in the document that I shared with the board this afternoon. There are specific instances where if there are agriculturally type uses or other uses that are not Protected under Section three explicitly exempt under section three, or even by your zoning bylaw under three point two. That There are thresholds here presented that would require a site plan review, so something like You know, cider mill or winery selling product. And again, these are best practices from around the Commonwealth. Anytime that there would be parking for twenty or more vehicles, just understanding the types of uses That you could permit over there, which would be agricultural in nature. But would require a permit or an approval by the planning board. What also is in this sample bylaw is the one point, one point three C, Which is the following uses are allowed only by special permit from the planning board, and that's a restaurant related to the agricultural use on site. And non-agricultural related uses such as small scale entertainment venues Or organized meeting spaces made available for rent for weddings, corporate picnics, birthday parties and the like. And that would require a special permit. You know, I think if you were to pick and choose, You could definitely identify this type of Use within the use table. We would put that in somewhere appropriate and then also Define those types of spaces and then create the standards based on that. Identifying that You know, you had to have at least a certain amount of acreage or whatnot, but we could define it such as that. But I think that the way that this model allows for is that These are specific uses that would be required for special permit and thresholds by which Any sort of development on that parcel for the above, for those listed under one point, one point three B Would require a site plan approval by the planning board. So it's it's understanding that You know, your your zoning enforcement officer would receive a request and depending on that, if there was some sort of Use that wasn't automatically exempt from section three of chapter forty-eight That you could go through a site plan review process or even a special permit process. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, there were two other examples That You know, whether or not the board wanted to get involved with permitting Creating permits for Limiting activities, so events, you know, if if they wanted to get involved, if the board wanted to get involved with that. And then the town of Amherst identifies outdoor recreational use, which, you know, could be a majority of the the large parcels in your residential Single family unit zone that with a special permit in a similar, yeah, so Isn't allowed use with a special permit and and you can create a special permit for You know, those specific uses if you want to name them. And that would be, you know, a simple Definition within the the list of definitions as well as Identifying any standards and the permitting mechanism for getting there. So I don't know if there were any any additional, any initial thoughts or comments with regards to this. I know we didn't Really have much in the summer with regards to this, but you know, if there's something Thing else that you think that we should be exploring. You know, I think this is, this is a good time to 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 at least look for more more examples. Or, you know, if there's some fine tuning that we need to to look at.
Yeah, there's there's another component to this, I think. Is that the Although it may be, the planning board can can Massage the bylaws a little bit and present them to the town for approval. There's another step That's involved with the select board actually issuing the permits for use. If there's, if the venue requires or requests Certain things to be conducted on the premise. Such as alcohol, entertainment.
That's correct. So there would be other components of this as As especially if it's this type of entertainment venue. As as the chair mentioned, you know, the select board should at least, you know, understand that They will have a role in a coordinated effort. Let's say if if the town were to explore this particular type Of permit or special permit that anytime alcohol will be served or any other type of Mechanisms within your general bylaw that requires select board Approvals for something that would also apply, but with regards to the planning board, it's specific to that type of use To to know that that type of use would be allowed or not allowed based on the zoning bylaw. And that's your protection, your your Response or your role in identifying this particular use and whether or not it's appropriate for a certain parcel.
Correct. But it would also be good to understand what the 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 select board would allow. So so in other words, if It Let's let's say the select board is only going to allow events Take place With this type of venue and and these residential zones, no more than X amount of times per year. And they they may only allow A permit for a venue of up to X amount of That would be important for us to know On what what we would allow. Or could allow.
Yeah, I I think that there is some coordination that probably needs to occur with the select board. You know, understanding that if the town in its general bylaws has specifics with regards to events and Uses of buildings and how many alcohol licenses or one day license, alcohol licenses that Could be issued during a span of a year. That, you know, would be important for the planning board to just be knowledgeable about. However, I think also the planning board, if, you know, if adopting something similar to this, the way that this is written, Would condition its approval based on, you know, the understanding that this, that there would be additional permitting that would be required Either through the select board or Board of Health or, you know, whatnot.
Yes. This sounds to me to be potentially very layered. And I was originally thinking that maybe a template that could be used is how the Select board handles the
The frames?
Use, yes, the do frames, you know, regarding Number of people and after, and I'm not sure of all the rules that the select board has, But I guess you can apply for a one day liquor license there. Or maybe even just a one day liquor license and or a one day beer wine license. And over so many people requires On duty police officers, that kind of stuff. But it's like I said, it sounds to be very layered. And and I'm not saying that that's a bad thing. At all.
Maybe we should treat it similar to like the, and I'm just thinking out loud here. Treat it like the zoning board of appeals. Zoning Board of Appeals is reluctant to approve something without a site plan approval. But maybe we 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 present that, we take it on a case by case basis. Someone presents to the planning board that they Are looking for a site plan approval to accommodate three hundred people. We review it and we either deny or or approve Or approve with with conditions that We would only allow two hundred people. So now they have a site plan approval for two hundred people for a venue. Then they have something to go to the The select board looking for permitted use. And then the select board can make an educated decision that the planning board has approved it for two hundred people. We can license it for X amount of times a year or or We can license it for X amount of times a year or or or. Maybe that's how we, just like we do with zoning. Maybe that's how we how we deal with it. Starts with us, we determine what it's capable of doing. Of providing and then it can go to the other entities and when we do it. With a site plan approval, we send it out to the Board of Health. So the Board of Health would question us on facilities. And that sort of thing. And then if, you know, conservation, so on and so forth. With a public hearing. And then it would just, maybe then it would just be up to the select board to see what they license it for, yeah, we'll we'll license it for alcohol for two hundred people. But we think we probably would want a some sort of supervision or for traffic or for whatever.
Okay, but when you're saying licensing. Are you talking about each individual event? Or somebody comes forth in the year twenty twenty one and says, okay, this is my. Eight acre parcel, I want to be able to do this, we look at it, we say, okay. And that's good for the the life of the property. You know, I don't, I I personally don't think, okay, we don't want to be seeing these things in front of. The planning board every other week. You know, the next week, we're gonna have a birthday party there, the following week a wedding, that kind of stuff.
No, we we would approve the site plan approval for the maximum. Allowed venue.
Once, once in one time only. Providing that there are no changes. To the site.
Yes, and then the licensing authority. Select board would determine, okay, we'll we'll allow you to. To hold. You know, thirty events a year or 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 whatever, I don't know what, I don't know how they do that. But that point, we said we approved it and allowed and we are allowing X, Y and Z to take place on this premise. And it's up to the to the select board as the licensing authority, whether it's a car dealership. What whatever, a liquor license, whatever is under their purview. And that would be up to them and and whatever we approve would give them some sort of standing on what what they would allow. Based on the physical capacity capability of the of the facility.
Well, I guess I'm also wondering. You know, as we're talking these outdoor venues and. Jim, you had mentioned Board of Health. I'm just trying to close any possible loopholes or bring up any potential loopholes, I should say.
Go ahead, sorry.
How would the Board of Health, you know, would the Board of Health have to be involved every time? To say, okay, you're having two hundred people, we're gonna require. Six. Sandy cans of. You know, I. I don't know how all that works and that's the unfortunate thing is I don't believe any of us know how that works. And I'm not so sure that we can. Move on this without knowing these other intricacies.
So you're you're partially correct. In my opinion, so we would treat it like it was a restaurant coming to town, right? We would approve the site plan. When when we do that, we we kick plans out to the other department heads. They'll all comment on what has been presented. The, let's use. Police Department, for instance, or or DPW for the curb cut, they they may. The the curb cut's fine, they've got good access, this police may comment, yep, they've got good. They've got good view exiting and entering the property, no issue. The. Board of Health. They say they're gonna need to show. Facilities. If if you're approving this for a hundred people, they need to show X amount of facilities for. Restrooms. Based on code. So we we get all that feedback and and we approve under condition that, you know, you have. You have to have those things in place. And then the next step would, they would still have to go to the the. Board of Health for approval of these. Facilities to make sure that they meet code. So we, you know, it'd be no different than, you know, we have nothing to do with. The anything inside a a facility. We just approve the site plan, then there's other. But with Board of, would go to the Board of Health, select board would require Board of Health approval, Board of Health would say you need. Two handicap restrooms and five. Unisex or or public restrooms to be used by the rest of the public or something, something, I don't know, I don't know how they do that. Okay, and once it, for those things, then the then the select board could say, okay, you've met the satisfied. This board, this board, department heads. Everybody's saying you're capable of. And again, this is permit, any feedback or negative feedback from butters. And then that would be up to the select board to say, okay, she will permit to operate. Under. Under the recommended conditions that all the other departments. Approved. So I guess we just stick with what we know, what what we're responsible. Not worry about. Other entities other than your feedback.
So would there be a definition or a use? That would be different than anything that could be found in a commercial use or would be particular to. These large residential, residentially zoned parcels where some of this activity would be happening. Do we come up with a new definition, do we come up with a new term? I guess that, you know, that's a question, understanding that. If you're just to introduce this specific type of use and or have the ability to. Put a building on this large parcel for the. For the purposes of having these events or, you know, which would require other permitting from town. Do any of the definitions that are listed currently in your zoning bylaw? Are they applicable? And if so, more than likely, they wouldn't be allowed in the residential zone. So it may be. Something where. You know, we can do some further. Research and and combing through other communities throughout the country that, you know, have to deal with this and it's it's not a new thing. So I'm sure that. There may be some communities that have gotten it right. But I think that's just my thought with regards to identifying this particular use that we know is only going to be. In these larger parcels and in residentially zoned areas.
Think there needs parameters around it that. If they're gonna do that type of of. A venue of fifty people or less, there'd be some sort of threshold. If it's gonna be a hundred people. Or less, another threshold should need to be met. And and I don't know if fifty and a hundred. The right. Numbers, but there. There's a big difference between. A hundred and fifty or two hundred people at a venue. Somebody that's looking to do a venue of. You know, thirty people or forty, fifty people. And you don't want to, you don't want to preclude those that are just looking to do something small. We're not doing it. We don't want, we don't want a hundred people. If we choose to do that, right?
I think that. As Ken just stated, it might be worth researching further. What other communities have done, even maybe within the. The nation. To see how. How they've been able to dot the I's and cross the T's.
Yep, I'm good with that, I don't bet the wheel if it's already out there, that's for sure.
And and just quickly, because I. Was looking through past emails and. There is, I think, one thing that could be applicable and could be explored further for adaptation into a zoning bylaw and that's specific to. A idea and a use called a private event and a private event venue. And those types of venues and uses would be in. A residential zone and would need to have, at the very least. The gross parcel size being at least ten acres or however, you know, whatever the board would decide. But there are these specific location standards that could be applied to those to those uses because you know that those uses. Would only be found on these larger parcels. So I think at the very least, it's it's, you know, looking at that type of language and understanding that. I think for the board to be able to possibly to adapt to this new type of use. It's identifying what this use would be called, defining it and creation, creating the location standards. You know, that would create a permit permitting mechanism for at least crossing a threshold where where that would be needed. Yeah, so, yeah.
Think you just gave yourself some more homework.
It it's always nice to see what other, what other parts of the country are doing because this is a zoning challenge. And this is a land use question because, you know, how do towns address these weddings, right? In in the countryside and because there's a nice barn and, you know, I'm sure that many communities in in Massachusetts. Don't necessarily know about these big events that may be happening on an individual's like housing lot. You know, you're gonna have a hundred fifty guests on, you know, probably a larger parcel, but. You know, if if there is that one time where you have. Neighbors that are like, there's a lot of activity, you know, going on at this person's, at this person's property. You know, with the 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 board, should the town be, you know, knowledgeable about that? And not just weddings, but you know, all all sorts of that, I'd activities that could happen.
There there's all kinds of venues like this all throughout Western Mass.
Yeah.
All through. And and it's it's old farms that have been converted to these venues, so I think, I think. If you have the, if you have the acreage. If the if the the use area has. I mean, it's it's certainly not something we're gonna, that I would would allow on a. Would would consider on a two acre lot in in the middle of a. Housing development. But if, but if it's a former farm or, you know, something with, like you said, acreage, a minimum acreage. Would set back so it doesn't, has plenty of parking and and it's it's, there's no, there's. Noise. And I mean, they're they're all over the place. But yeah, if you can get, if you can get us some some criteria that. I don't think we have to go all over the nation, I think we can look right here in Western Mass. Even Eastern Mass and and see. See what some of the towns have.
I I know that there are some challenges to this particular, you know, for those types of uses where. You know, at least what I know in in Franklin and Berkshire County, there are some communities that. You know, they seem to live. Fine with a property with a large barn or, you know, had that has been changed to. You know, these outdoor venues that have a lot of people in it. With very minimal permitting with, you know, maybe a review by the Board of Health. And maybe a liquor, a day liquor license by the select board. You know, and and not necessarily including a land use authority like the planning board or the ZBA to issue any sort of land use grants. Land use.
Well, give us some example. If this is something that's widespread and it's fairly. Easily to obtain, then.
I mean, sometimes it's out of sight, out of mind and that's, you know, that's what I was going, you know, how I was. Approaching the the specific examples of 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 communities that don't have, that don't have a. A planning board or ZBA reviewing these types of, you know, activities on on those types of structures. But I think that at at a good starting point for 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 you, for the Grammy Planning Board. Would be maybe to identify some standards by which you could foresee some of these larger parcels in town. You know, possibly. Benefiting from these types of uses.
Well, you know what? Not only will do the parcels benefit from them, but in some ways the community. We don't have the urban, you know, the sprawl.
Right.
They're not developed. Okay, so you'll do some more homework on that for us, present us with.
Yeah.
I'm wondering of. What other members of the planning board think about? The way this is heading.
I I personally think we get more information and go from there.
Yeah, so Robbie, I agree, I definitely don't want to see, you know, these opportunities for some people in town that want to do these venues. Definitely don't want to shoot these down, you know, we want some business in town and as long as they're on some. You know, some good acreage, I'm all for that, you know, so I wanna definitely want to see these venues go forward.
This is Lil, I can, I definitely agree with everybody that, but we need more information on how other towns are doing it. Just so that this doesn't get all out of hand and we miss something and. Ruins it for everybody, but yeah, we definitely need something like this in town.
Okay, I. I think back to when we were doing the marijuana bylaws. And Jim so aptly put it, you know, this is a living, breathing. Document that is gonna need to be. Altered as situations arise and I think we've got to look at it like that as well, this. Like that one as well. I don't think there's any way we can dot all the I's and cross all the T's in one fell swoop.
I agree, Bob. I think, I think it's something we. I think that, again, we're not the final say, we we present to the town and the town's the final. We, we present to the town and the town's the final, the final say on it. But if it's something that, that puts some good parameters around that protects the butters and, and, you know, without handcuffing the, the paraters, it makes it, you know, profitable for them and worth doing and, you know, see any harm in it.
So basically, the general, if I'm understanding this, the general consensus of the board is, yes, let's try to get something like this. Let's try to help out our property owners here in the community that may have a desire to do this. Yes, there's going to be rules, regulations, whether it be from the Planning Board, Board of Health, Select Board, Conservation Commission, whoever. But let's see if we can come up to a working standard. And I'm not sure that that's quite the right word because each one is going to be site-specific. But let's see what we can do.
That's right. And, and, and by setting the groundwork for this, if one of these gets out of hand, the licensing authority is the, and, and it's something that has to be done on an annual basis. The top, the, the Select Board has the, the authority to, to regulate the free. That's, so I, I think it's a good, and there's, there's always a way of getting it down the road.
That's right, Jim. And you bring up a very good point that I don't believe we discussed at all. But there should be a license thing on an annual basis, such as the common vituums licenses, the alcohol licenses and everything else.
You know, it's outside of our purview, but it's not something that's, you know, when you sit here, you're in.
Right.
Some kind of different, the other one, they, um, award. All right, what else we got? Anything else? Or we have enough tonight? I think, I think Ken's plate's pretty full. We probably got him busy for a while.
Yeah, I, I wasn't able to do any additional research on the outdoor barn or at least something that can be presented in a coherent way. I wasn't able to put that together. But I think, you know, based on our conversation on Monday, Lil wasn't present, but for the, um, the discussion about solar and the, the, um, the screening, I guess, trying to understand what the, the context of the possible amendment would be. And maybe Lil, if she has something to comment about that particular amendment.
Well, that's a good lead in, Ken. Thank you. Um, just, I can do this really quickly and to clarify it a little better. So people, some people are concerned about the visibility of all this ground-mounted solar that's allowed by right up to a certain size at homes. And some people are concerned about, you know, I'm driving by, I'm seeing this right there with the house right next door. You know, it looks crappy and all that. Now, the, um, Department of Energy, Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources has sample bylaws for this specific thing and saying that, in essence, that they should be located in the side or the rear lot line. And these bylaws, we would have to have bylaws in for small and medium ground-mounted solar projects. The bylaws would, would say, okay, here, you're allowed side or the back. It wouldn't say anything about what they have to plant for screening or anything like that. We wouldn't get into that. It'd be very simple like this and the board would not even have to approve anything. It'd be out of our hands because it's allowed by right. But this way, it would have to be either on the side or in the back. And the state does allow for this and acknowledges that not everybody likes to see that sort of thing. I can send you the document that has that sample bylaws in it so you can understand it a little better. And it would just be up to the building inspector to say, yep, you're okay.
I, I would like to see that myself, Lil, if you, if you would.
Not a problem. I'll send it out tonight.
Yeah, that's an interesting direction with regards to ground-mounted solar. It's, you know, Lil brings up a good point about small versus medium versus large, which, you know, obviously the town of Grand B regulates large gra, large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems. And so, understanding that there may be thresholds within individual parcels, you know, that's something that the board can explore. But I think the, the materials that she'll be sharing probably will allude to that. And some communities in the Pioneer Valley do have measurements or thresholds for the small versus medium versus large. And small is usually handled by administrative approval by the building inspector, whereas medium may not necessarily qualify for a special permit, but rather a site plan review among other types of installations that are not ground-mounted. So that's just a, that's just a comment about the various sizes of ground mountain, ground-mounted solar. But I'm sure that the documentation that Lil will share will probably shine some light on that.
Um, Ken, do you know of any bylaws that other towns have done for the small and medium?
Town of Beltratown has a small and medium ground mountain and, um, I think Pelham has one. A lot of towns are amending their bylaw to address small and medium for various reasons. But off, off the top of my head, those are the two that come to mind. I was, yeah, go ahead.
If you could find those and send them to everybody, then we'd have, you know, a little more background to go by.
Sure. And as you may, or the board may or may not know, I was, um, I was part of a study, a, a working group that prepared a best practices guide for solar development. And I'll share that with the board too. It's, it's, you know, it was using 11 communities in the Pioneer Valley of various sizes. And we came up with model bylaw language, but also considerations for these various types of solar developments. So I'll, in addition to maybe sharing those bylaws with the other sized solar development, sharing that document just for, for your reference and for your information.
Sounds good.
So it sounds like Ken's got a lot of work to do and we have a fair amount of reading to do.
Okay, does everybody?
I will make a motion to adjourn if we're at that point.
I'll entertain that in a second.
I'll second.
Is there any other further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Lillian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Jim's an aye. Pushing.